Okay, so good morning, everybody, and welcome to this morning's media briefing. It's the 26th of November 2021. Steve has already informed you that it's been recorded, so we'll go on from there. Most people know me, but I'm Abby from the County Council comms team, here with Steve Thorne from the City Council comms team and Alex Ball from the CCG comms. The briefing follows the usual format with updates from members of our panel. And after the updates, there will be questions from the floor. But our panel, Jonathan Gribbin, Director of Public Health for the county, Lucy Hubber, Director of Public Health for the city, and Amanda Sullivan, Accountable Officer for the CCG. I'm going to hand over to the panel now for them to give us updates on their particular areas. So I'm going to start with Amanda. Thanks, Amanda.
Morning, everyone. So the high levels of coronavirus transition that we see in our communities does continue to cause extreme pressures on the NHS. And our health professionals are working tirelessly to provide care for people in emergencies, but also for their planned procedures as well. And we are sadly seeing an average of 12 people needing to go into our hospitals each day, with 187 people in hospital on the 23rd of November. And we do still have people dying of coronavirus every day, sadly. We are still finding that people who've been vaccinated are much less likely to become seriously ill, so that's good news. And the illness is often quite mild for vaccinated people. Recent statistics do bring this to light and show that the risk of death involving coronavirus is 32 times greater in unvaccinated people than those who have received both doses. So you can see the very considerable benefits of having your vaccines. So if you haven't had your first or second dose of the vaccine, you can still walk into our main sites and get a jab. And many people are still doing that, which is really pleasing. And it will give people protection as we head towards Christmas and the festive season. If you're over 40, over 16 with a health condition that makes you more vulnerable to coronavirus, or a frontline health and care worker, you should get your booster, your third jab or booster, from 182 days after your second jab. And there are lots of sites, more and more bookings coming online all the time. You can book via 119 or the National Booking website, and it will tell you where your nearest sites are. There are thousands of slots available for you to book, so do top up your immunity as we head into winter. And also, new slots are being released all the time, so do keep checking if you don't initially see what you think you need. GP practices are also contributing to the vaccination programme. And so you may actually get a call or a text from your local practice to book. But it is vital that you book your booster as soon as you can. We've got lots of sites available, lots of slots available, so please come and get your jab. Thank you. That's my update. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Amanda. Now I will hand over to Jonathan. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us again today. I wanted to start off with just a quick reflection on context over the last week or so, because we've heard quite a lot in the national media over the last week from some of our European neighbours about deteriorating situation there. Yesterday, we heard also of news emerging about a new variant of interest, B.11529. And some of you will have heard representatives from the United Kingdom Health Security Agency saying that it's the most significant variant that we've come across to date. And you'll have heard about some of the urgent work ongoing internationally to assess some of the implications of that variant of interest in terms of vaccines, the spread of COVID-19, and the treatments that we have for it. And of course, more recently now, today, and thinking locally, we've heard already about the ongoing extreme pressures that our local NHS and care system face. The fact that sadly, there are still a dozen or so people being admitted to our hospitals every day for treatment for COVID-19. And tragically, still, we have people dying. So all of this underlines to us once again that the pandemic is not over. It continues to represent a very serious health hazard, not only internationally, but also for us here in Nottinghamshire. And that underlines the need for us to stay cautious, and in particular, to come forward to book ourselves a booster as soon as we become eligible, and also to get tested as well. Now, against that context, there are some really good reasons to be positive, because we have some very clear grounds for the action that we need to take. And before I talk about the rates in Nottinghamshire, I just wanted to briefly touch on three pieces of evidence that have emerged over the last fortnight or so since we were last meeting together for this briefing. So the first relates to some further data coming out from the Office of National Statistics, which was really looking at the risk of death and summarising that across people of all ages, we find that the risk of death is 32 times greater for people who are unvaccinated. So we're talking about the risk of death from COVID-19. And that really underlines to us the importance of the evergreen offer which our local NHS continues to hold out to us. And I'm really pleased that we find, week by week, that there continue to be people in Nottinghamshire who've decided that actually now is the right time to come forward for their first or their second dose. And if that is you, then in our main centres, it continues to be possible to come forward and to simply walk in for your first or your second dose. The second piece of evidence that I wanted to highlight today was further information coming out from the React 1 study. And this is more about how COVID-19 is spreading, and its findings very much consistent with what I described a moment or two ago. But it does also point out that the protection which the vaccines provide us, the really very effective protection, do start to wane after about six months. It also, though, showed that when we take the booster and have the booster vaccine, it does precisely what it says on the tin. It boosts our protection again. It restores the level of protection that we enjoy against spread of infection. So that's really important. And that's really further evidence to underline the importance of coming forward to book your booster as soon as you become eligible. Now, I do want to underline that for people becoming eligible for a booster, it's important that we book our appointments. And that's going to be the arrangement in Nottinghamshire now. There are more and more appointments becoming available. And I'm really pleased also to hear that there are an increasing number of sites becoming available where we can take advantage of that. If you've been unable to book on already but are eligible, please continue to try booking on, and you'll find further slots becoming available to you in the coming days. The third piece of evidence that I wanted to briefly underline moves us on from talking about vaccines to the other essential measures that we must keep going with. So there was a study published a week or so ago in the British Medical Journal. And that was really looking at other public health measures which are effective, both at reducing spread and also at reducing the likelihood of death arising from COVID-19. And that really underlined that a combination of these measures are really important and effective. So they're measures that you will have heard us talking about almost every time we've met over the last year or year or so at least, and include frequent hand washing and use of face coverings, and especially when we're in crowded indoor spaces. And also, the importance of really good ventilation and fresh air when we are meeting indoors. And that's a reminder too, that wherever we can meet up out of doors, that's even safer. And then alongside that, I really wish to underline today the ongoing really important role that testing plays. Now, first of all, it continues to play an absolutely essential and critical role if any of us develop symptoms of COVID-19. It's really important that we come forward for a PCR test and that we isolate, awaiting the results of that. But in addition to that, I wanted to underline as well, even for those of us who have been vaccinated, the important role that lateral flow tests continue to play. And we can take up the offer of regular lateral flow tests. And in particular, those are important if our living or working arrangements mean that we're going to find ourselves in a situation which is relatively high risk. So again, when we're likely to be in an indoor space, meeting up with people we're not normally coming into close proximity with. Some of you may be thinking of going out shopping over this weekend, for example. So taking advantage of a lateral flow test in advance of that is a really important way that you can protect people around you as well as keeping a check on your own infection status. So I want to just finish up by giving you the rates that we have in Nottinghamshire. We need to understand that whether from one week to the next, they go up a little bit or down a little bit. What we're actually seeing at the moment are ongoing very high rates, which means that all of the things that I've underlined already are really important for us to keep going with. But in Nottinghamshire County as a whole at the moment, we continue to see between 500 and 600 people every day testing positive for coronavirus. Just in the last week or so, that's included each day more than 100 young people of primary school age and something in the order of about 70, I think, young people of secondary school age. But actually, also in those numbers, we find adults of all ages. The exception I would bring out at the moment is that whereas we've seen increasing rates in people of all ages, at the moment amongst older adults, people aged over 60, we still see people testing positive, but those rates are not increasing at the moment. So COVID-19 remains a serious health risk for us in Nottinghamshire. Please continue to stay cautious. Let the fresh air in. Wear face coverings in crowded enclosed spaces. Get tested. And also, please make sure that you get vaccinated. If you're eligible for a booster, come forward. Get yourself booked in. If you've not yet taken advantage of your first or second dose, please come forward now. Join others who are doing the same thing. And you can do that still by walking into our main vaccination centres. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I'll go now to Lucy. Thank you.
Hi, morning, everyone. I see Hugh so fast on the question button. He's got his hands up already. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. The case rates in Nottingham City are currently slightly increasing. And we're currently at 324 cases per 100,000. Now, relatively, that's low against other places in the country, but it's still a really high case rate. COVID has not left the city. And we are seeing increases across almost all age groups. As Jonathan was just saying, across Nottinghamshire, our over 60s are the only age group where we're not currently seeing increases. But every other age group has got increasing cases. And that's natural as we begin to mix more and as the cold weather starts, as we begin to come inside more and start to close the windows. So we're now in the run-up to Christmas. We're now a month away from Christmas, and we need to start thinking about what we can all do in order to make sure that we get to spend time over this Christmas holiday period with the people that we value and appreciate. Number of things we can do. Obviously, it's never too late to get vaccinated. Getting vaccinated now means that you will begin to have some immunity ready for that Christmas period. So if you've not had your first or your second dose, please come along to the vaccine centres or to the bus and come and get your jab. If you do your booster, book a booster. There's lots of appointments available online now. Our colleagues in the NHS have been working really hard, and every day, they're refreshing that with more appointments. So keep looking, and you'll find some availability that will suit you across a whole different range of venues. Really important to get that vaccine, and now is the great time to do it in order for us to get Christmas. The other thing is around testing. And we're seeing a lot of cases coming up at the moment amongst people who have been mixing and socialising and maybe have got a bit of a cold, they're feeling a bit rundown, got the small cough, just a little cough. Really important, you go and get your PCR test. The lateral flow tests are brilliant at checking your status before you go out for the evening or for testing regularly. But if you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, and I can't emphasise that enough, no matter how mild, you need to go and get a PCR test. That PCR test will tell you really accurately whether or not you've got COVID. The lateral flow tests, as I say, are brilliant about testing us before we go out to our Christmas parties, before we go and see our loved ones to deliver Christmas presents, before we go Christmas shopping. So use those lateral flow tests regularly if you're going out and about a lot, or certainly before large events, just to check your status if you don't have any symptoms. The other thing that we can all do is to wear a face covering when we're out and about. And Jonathan mentioned the research that was recently published in the British Medical Journal. And what that showed was that the more people who wear face coverings, the more effective they are. So the more of us that choose to wear our face coverings in crowded settings or in indoor settings, the more we protect those around us. So really important to remember that face coverings can make a difference. And finally, ventilation. It's actually a really beautiful autumn, so meeting people outdoors and going for walks is really sensible. Trying to remember about creating space if you're having a Christmas party so that you're not too crowded, and think about the ventilation into those spaces. And those actions, starting now, will mean that we should have a good run-up till Christmas and try and keep those case rates down. Thanks, Abby.
Thank you for that, Lucy. Thank you. I will now go over to questions, and I know there are a couple of hands up, but just to remind people, if you could limit yourself, please, to one question and one follow-up question. As you know, if we keep the microphones and cameras off unless people are speaking, it does help the file size. Please state where you're from for the purposes of the recording. And if I miss your hand, I will come back to you. You will get a chance to ask your question. And so on that note, I will go to questions. And I think the first hand up was Hugh's. So Hugh, your question?
Good morning. Yeah, Hugh from BBC Nottingham here. Yes, I was a bit trigger happy there, wasn't I? Sorry, Lucy. I wasn't trying to jump ahead of you. It's just before I get to my own questions, actually. It's just because I wanted to clarify something that Jonathan said. Jonathan, you spoke about people booking for their booster vaccines and that being the arrangements going forward. I just want to make sure I've got facts right on this. Does that mean that people can't walk in for booster jabs anymore? Is that correct?
In short, yes. I'm going to let Amanda fill in on the detail in a second. But yes, we want to do two things. We want to make sure that people who come forward for boosters book. We also want people who, for whatever reason, haven't yet come forward for their first or second dose to know that there is still the option for them to be able to walk in if that's going to be the best way for them to make their arrangements. Amanda, do you want to just...
Yes, thank you. So we are very much strongly recommending that people book for the booster jabs, more like it was in the first and second jab ways. And that is a way of helping to make sure that we are targeting our resources in the places where more people are coming forward for their jabs. And it means more people can get their jabs. It's a more effective way of getting more people jabbed. So that is very much our preferred route. Thank you.
That's from today, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, thank you. But people can still walk in for first and second jabs?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Sorry. Because I just thought that would be something that we make sure we get absolutely spot on for our listeners. Sorry, can just turn to my questions. Jonathan, you mentioned the new variant found in South Africa. No cases confirmed in the UK, of course. Lot of unanswered questions, it seems. But can you, and Lucy may want to pitch in on this as well, can you tell us a bit about the monitoring that takes place in Nottinghamshire and elsewhere, and how we would hypothetically detect a case of that variant here so that people can just be reassured that it won't slip in unnoticed? And what would happen if a case were detected here? What sort of processes are there in place for that?
Thanks for the question, Hugh. Yeah, happy to start off on that one. So you're quite right, there are no UK cases at the moment. And there are, as of now, some border arrangements being put in place which will potentially slow up, at least, and delay when we might see that variant of interest emerge in the UK. We've got good arrangements across the United Kingdom, coordinated by the UK Health Security Agency, to monitor the occurrence of variants under investigation like this. And working with an area like Nottinghamshire, we would expect to receive communication from UK Health Security Agency, their local health protection team, if they identify that there's a case that's occurred within Nottinghamshire. Our local outbreak management plans, that we haven't talked a whole load about recently, but which we continue to have in place, set out the plans that we've got locally if we were to receive a signal from UK Health Security Agency that we needed to step up, for example, something like the sort of surge testing that was seen a number of months ago in response to an occurrence locally. In all likelihood, if that were to happen and we needed to step up something of any scale, that would require a multi-agency response. And once again, as we did earlier in the year, we would work through the Local Resilience Forum. So that brings together public sector and other partners to mobilise a multi-agency response for that. And we've got really good arrangements right across Nottinghamshire for doing that. And Lucy and myself also have some good joint arrangements for putting in place some of the logistics and the planning and the delivery of arrangements like that as well. Hugh, perhaps I can just invite Lucy just to fill in on anything that I might not have covered there in terms of our multi-agency response locally?
I think for Nottingham City, we have another way of picking up potential variants, which is we're part of the wastewater testing, regular screening. So that's people who don't present necessarily for testing, but it's picked up through testing sewage, let's be honest. And so that gives us an indication of what we see within our population and community. So that's another route for picking it up. I would just endorse what Jonathan has said. I think this point now in the pandemic, we stepped up a response when the Alpha variant was found. We stepped up a response when the Delta variant was found. We are ready for addressing any of the additional actions that might be required for containing outbreaks of new variants as and when they're picked up. I think it's probably really important for us to say that we don't know a lot about the new variant. It's very confusing that they've called it that. And so we really need to try and control the spread into the country, which is why it's great that we've got some measures around our border controls until we can learn some more about it and know what the appropriate response is. But I would just endorse what Jonathan said. We are now nearly two years in and have good and robust systems to be able to step up. We've done things before like what we would call backpack testing. So that's going out to people's communities with testing agents, who is going into schools and delivering testing, or workplaces, and so on. So we're good and ready, should we need to take that sort of response if this variant is of concern.
Thank you both. Thank you. I'm glad I'm not the only one who is a little bit confused about the naming of the new variant, as I think we're probably going to end up calling it in radio. Can I just ask Jonathan as well briefly? Newark and Rushcliffe seem particularly badly hit with high case rates at the moment. Both have Christmas light switch on events this weekend. How content are you that they can go ahead safely? What would you say to anyone going to them? And a lot of people may wonder as well, what makes those events safe when Nottingham City's lights switch on was a very low-key affair to stop crowds from gathering?
So the oversight of the security of events like that is undertaken by our district and borough councils working to an assessment framework, which is pretty consistent across the county. The public health advice would be the same as it is for other events. So I'm pleased that people are able to come together out of doors rather than indoors. When people are going to be engaging in something that is relatively high risk, I want to underline again the opportunity that we have to take up the offer of a lateral flow test that, of course, people can get hold of free of charge through a number of places in Nottinghamshire, including a lot of our community pharmacies. By getting tested in advance of that, you can check out your infection status and make sure that you protect those around you. If you find yourself in indoor crowded settings, then of course, face coverings are really important to use as well. And the evidence indicates that that can help protect you and certainly those around you. And when we are indoors, I'd underline again what we've covered already, and that's the importance of making sure that there is plenty of fresh air and really good ventilation. But of course, people going to events like this will want to make sure that as well as in coming together to enjoy the events, that they maintain sensible social distancing. And many people, understandably, even those who have been vaccinated, will choose not to bunch up in a very tight crush with other people and will use their common sense about maintaining a bit of distance there as well. Thanks, Hugh.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, for those answers to these questions. The next hand up is from Jo, Jo Locker.
Hi there, guys. How are you doing? Good to speak to you again. So it seems Hugh had pretty much exactly the same questions as me. So I guess I'll just ask them in a different way to get a bit more information, I suppose. So the first is obviously the new variant. So basically, obviously, you've said you've got all these kind of protocols in place. But I think just this morning, the Health Secretary has said it's highly likely. It's already spread to other countries. And obviously, historically, looking back, it's always been, I guess, hard to nip it in the bud, I suppose, before it does spread. So I guess my question is, how concerning is it? And I guess as we get near Christmas and the festive period, how likely is it that there might be some extra restrictions in place? Because obviously, last year, we had kind of a last-minute change of rules and all sorts. So yeah, I guess how concerning is it? And how likely is it that we will get more restrictions, I suppose? Cheers.
I'm happy to start off with an answer, Jo, and allow others to just to join in. So I think first of all, we need to underline that this is a variant under investigation. The reason it's under investigation is because we need to establish internationally whether with the mutations that we see on this variant, the vaccine effectiveness is in any way impacted and affected. We need to establish still whether or not this has an impact on how easily the virus is spread. And we also need to do further work to understand whether it has any implications for the treatments that are provided to people who are experiencing complications arising from COVID nineteen. So all of that is yet to be assessed. So I think the way I would address your question about how concerned should we be would would be to underline once again the responsibility that each of us has to play our part in stopping the spread and in reducing the the already very severe strains on our local NHS and care system. So with that in mind, that that comes down to right now making sure that if you're eligible, you get the vaccine. And we want to make sure that people across Nottinghamshire book a booster for the very best Christmas and New Year. The best Christmas for you, your family, but also for our local NHS and care system. And as you become eligible, you can go online and book a booster at a number of sites right across Nottinghamshire. For people who are concerned that they've not yet taken advantage of a first or second dose, our local NHS continues to hold out an evergreen offer. And that means that you can still come forward. And actually, if you've not had your first or second dose, you can still walk into one of the main vaccination sites. There are other things we need to do alongside vaccines. Vaccines on their own have been very effective, but we need to make this vaccine plus. So the responsibility which each of us needs to exercise in this is to continue to make sure that we test and isolate right away if we develop any symptoms which might be COVID nineteen. It means that we need to make sure that we're using face coverings in crowded indoor spaces. We need to make sure that we let in lots of fresh air and get really good ventilation if we are indoors and mixing with other people. We need to keep going with that frequent hand washing, which will protect us not only against COVID nineteen, but against flu and other seasonal infections as well. And of course, as I mentioned earlier on, we're really wanting to encourage everyone to take up the offer of lateral flow tests. Because testing yourself regularly, and particularly if you're going into a situation which is relatively high risk. So that could mean that it was crowded and indoors, or perhaps you're mixing with with someone for whom the the implications of getting COVID nineteen could be particularly serious because they might have an underlying health condition. If you're in a situation like that, then having a lateral flow test in advance of that is really important, too. Joe, that's probably all from me. I'll just check whether Lucy or Amanda want to add anything, though.
I mean, Jonathan, I think that was an excellent answer. The reality is about about coronavirus as a whole and then any of the variants from it is that the the responses are the same. And it just changes the the emphasis on which we we place with them. But in terms of what we can all do individually, they remain the same. And that's about remembering that COVID, COVID enjoys proximity and loves a party, it enjoys a crowd. So all variants of COVID, whether it's the 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 delta variant that we we're currently mainly living with or any new variants that might come in, it's still being very careful and thinking about the environment in which you're meeting other people, wearing a face covering, checking that you have tested, that you're not carrying the the virus that you've tested, either if you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, or or that you've tested before you've gone despite not having symptoms and getting vaccinated. And what from what we understand at this very early stage with this variant is that that the vaccine will still provide protection. And we will yet to see how much protection is, but it's the the early evidence is saying that the vaccine will still be effective against it. So if people are thinking about the things that they can do and they're worried about the new vaccine, I'm afraid it's the same things, getting tested and and getting vaccinated. And if you haven't had your first or second dose, now is the right time to come in because you need to to give it that two weeks for that immunity to build up. And you can walk into many of our vaccine sites or or book a book a vaccine. And if you're ready for your booster, book that booster. You lots of slots are becoming available to be booked. And it's really important for your booster that you do book beforehand because lots of people are coming. So there's quite a crowd for boosters. So book your booster. And then you would have done everything that you can do to try and protect yourself and others from from coronavirus, whether it's new or old variants.
Does that answer for you, Joe? Is that?
Yeah, no, it's very thorough. Thanks very much. And I I guess just a really quick follow up is in terms of obviously Newark as well. Because I think recently the the cases were the fifth highest in the country, I believe, which is fairly significant. Obviously, in the past, we've had outbreaks at the back of all factory, for example. So I just wanted to clarify if there was any particular reason for that or if it was, you know, the usual kind of community transmission, many factors, that sort of thing. Cheers.
Thanks, Joe. It's a it's a good question. And I think I need to answer it in two or three parts. I think that the important thing to register is that rates right across Nottinghamshire are really high. Now, I might pick out one district or another from one week to another, which happens to be top of the list or near to the top of the list. But actually, what we see is ongoing community transmission, very high rates right across Nottinghamshire. Now, we've seen that children and young people at the moment are disproportionately represented in our high rates. And that's also true in Newark and Sherwood. But we see adults as well experiencing increasing rates. So really, whoever we are, whatever age we are, wherever it is that we live across Nottinghamshire, all the things that we've been talking about remain absolutely essential. And particularly for for people who are eligible now to come forward for a booster, it's critical that you book yourself a booster for the very best Christmas for yourself and for our local NHS and care system. And if you've not yet been able to take advantage of a first and second dose, it's not too late. And if that's you, you actually can still walk in to one of our main vaccination centres to receive your first or second dose.
Thank you, Jonathan. You're okay with that, Joe? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, perfect. Thanks very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. I cannot see any more hands. I'll just have one final check.
Abby, hi, it's Steve.
Oh, hello, Steve.
We had we have a Nottingham Trent University student, Ross, with us today. Ross's questions may have been answered by everything he's heard here today. But just in case he wasn't sure about the hand raising system, I just wanted to make sure.
Hello, Ross, are you?
Hi, yeah. Yes, Ross Chen from Nottingham Trent University. I think my most of my questions have been answered. I was just going to ask another thing earlier on. It might have been answered already and I guess either Jonathan, Lucy or Amanda could answer this. So the government obviously announced in a week that obviously you might need to take lateral flow tests before going out to do things like Christmas shopping now. I mean, how important do you reckon that will be, you know, in the build up to Christmas?
Thanks, thanks, Ross, for that question. And and thank you for giving us the opportunity to to reinforce this message. Really important. The the thing with COVID is that for most of us, and particularly now so many of us are vaccinated, we can can have the virus and have either no symptoms or or very few symptoms that mean that we wouldn't think necessarily around it. So really important that if you haven't got symptoms and you're going to go out to a crowded shop or you're going to go out to a party or go and meet your family for a pre-Christmas get together, take a lateral flow test beforehand. And that will make sure that you're doing everything you can to protect the people that you that you love and and help us all celebrate a a nice Christmas. If you've got any symptoms, no matter how mild, if you've if you've got a cough that you wouldn't normally have, go along and get a PCR test. And that test is the one that you should have if you've got any sort of symptoms. And and really important because sometimes now that we've vaccinated, we don't necessarily have a lot of virus up up our noses. So that that PCR test will confirm whether or not you you've got you've got COVID or not. So yes, if you're going out, if you're going to a party or you're going to the shops or you're going to something that's a big gathering, take a lateral flow test. If you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, get a PCR test. Really, really important. Second only to getting vaccinated. And 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 really important, if you're eligible for your booster, book a booster. Now is the time.
Great. Thank you so much, Lucy. Really appreciate it.
No problem. Thanks for joining us today, Ross.
Okay, thank you, Ross. Does that answer? You've covered all of your questions now?
Yes, that's absolutely perfect. Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you anyway, Abby.
You're welcome. And just one last final check. And no more questions. So I will quickly go back to the panel to ask if there's anything else they want to add. That's been very sort of comprehensive, lots of messages, lots for us to sort of actually do to make sure we and our loved ones are in a good place as we sort of run up to Christmas. December starts next week. So people are thinking about that. So any last comments from anybody? No?
No, no, thanks, Abby.
Well, Abby, we've got to say it, haven't we? As soon as you become eligible, book a booster for your very best Christmas for you and for the local NHS and care system.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Right, on that note now, I am just going to thank the panel again for their time. Quite a lot seems to have happened over the last two weeks. So really good that we're able to get together and and share all these messages. So thank you, Lucy, Jonathan, Amanda, for your time this morning. And thank you to media colleagues again for coming along, listening to what's been said and helping us to disseminate these messages across Nottinghamshire and and the city to all our residents that need to hear them and and act on them. And thanks to other colleagues who support in the background. Thank you very much. I would say have a very good weekend. And if you're going shopping, stay safe. Do all the things that you have been told you need to do. And we will see you in a couple of weeks' time. Thank you very much. Bye bye.